Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's meeting. Call meeting for orders.
I don't have one.
Okay. I'll re-site the college mission statement. Dodge City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. This time, I'll ask for any people from the community that'd like to address the trustees to do so this time. I failed to do that. Yes. All right, I'll back up. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's why you have a high chair. Okay, let's move on to approval of minutes, and I'll take a motion to approve the minutes. Corrections?
Still moved.
Is that for all three of them?
Yes.
All at once, okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. It's approved. All right, let's move on to the completion of the agenda. There is one action item that has been added. Is there any other adjustments to the agenda?
I'd like to take some things off for a discussion on the conservative. Item 1E. And number four under business services. Have some questions.
So 1E?
1E. And number four.
Okay.
And then on personnel. Number four and number six.
So what place is on the agenda? Program outage consent. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Now, a motion to approve the agenda is as revised.
I would still move to approve the agenda as advised.
Second?
One second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. I'll move on to reports to trustees, so. You're welcome.
Hello, you guys. Good evening, Board of Trustees. This is your chairman, not your nominee. It is very sad to say that is my last meeting today. And I know I promised I was not going to cry, but knowing that I will not be seeing you guys anymore, that breaks my heart. I want to say thank you for all the respect and attention you've all given me these past two semesters. And I really hope I made you guys proud. I really hope I got better throughout this month. So, to start off with my last report. ETK had their last meeting on Tuesday, April 30th, and they celebrated with pizza and drinks. Their two members, Eneth Morales and Catherine Ludnen, won the All-State Academic Team Scholarship. The Student Nursing Association had their graduation, the standing graduation, on May 4th. And STEM program is hosting two STEM days on June 7th and June 14th. Students will participate, they will participate in three different 50-minute STEM activities throughout the session and will be grouped into one of three age categories from first grade of fifth, sixth to eighth, and ninth to 12th. And for student government, unfortunately, we had a cancel or annual carnival. I think they had some, I think it was from some weather problems. And sadly. But our SGA election will be hosted until August. It got a little delayed due to some things that were going on. But as of right now, our new SGA, our president is considered our former vice president, Gregorio Valdez, who happens to be here tonight. Thanks for meeting him today. And I believe he's going to do great things for this college. He's your problem now.
Thanks for the morning.
Sorry.
I'm glad I'm not putting too much.
But yeah, that is all for student government for all the reports of this last few, this last few weeks. I want to also just say thank you once again for, you know, putting up with me all these months. And thank you for all the, for not making me feel so nervous all the time, because you can tell that I do sometimes. And it was an honor being a concussed student. But now it's my turn to become a hornet at Emporia State University and become a teacher. And who knows, maybe I'll come back and teach in Dodge. So I wish you guys a great, great summer. Don't get too sunburned and have a great day. God bless you all.
Dear, you've been a delight.
Thank you.
You have done an amazing job.
Thank you.
We're just all thrilled to see you every time you step to that podium. We've all just, they put smiles on our faces.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Good luck.
We'll move on to the trustee report, so Terry will start.
I don't have any.
I read in the hutch paper that their pathways to nursing, which I assumed is their upper-level courses leading to the upper degree, is one of five in Kansas. And I thought, well, good for them. We'll share our wonderful first-place nursing with them. So I just wanted to mention that. So ahead.
I really don't have a report other than I wanted to thank Abev and everyone who was connected with all the celebration around graduation. It was beautifully done, competently done, and was a really great few days.
We appreciate it.
Yes, it was great.
Jeremy?
I have nothing new other than to wish congratulations to all of those students who are graduating and the best of luck and good luck taking, filling those shoes regarding this. We look forward to.
Dr. Purpsey, I signed all those certificates in my hand.
Notice surgeon.
Kathy?
I met with the women's chamber today, and they have, Ethel Schneewies has a health coalition starting in Ford County. And they would like to have as many people as possible go online, and it's in Spanish and in English, and fill out a health needs. You can look at it through the community newsletter. The hospital has it on their Facebook. The Chamber Newsletter, I think, has it. And I have it on this piece of paper, but it's really hard to see. So I can't read it to you anyway. It's a bajillion letters long. But if we could help this coalition that's starting out with some of the needs that we have in Dodge City, they would appreciate it.
What's next, Barry?
I'd like to congratulate our welders and welding teachers for their competition at state or the competition they went to at Hudson. I think they did a fantastic job.
I have nothing to report. We'll move on to the president's report.
And Diesel.
And Diesel.
And Diesel, too.
Diesel also did well. Not much to report other than we've got graduation behind us, and now we start, now we start the rest of the work with our CFO and others for getting our budgets prepared. And so we look forward to a new year. People say, you know, it's funny, people say in our business, say, well, I guess now you're off for the, for the summer. No, this is when it really starts. So, really, thank y'all for all that you do. Appreciate you.
Okay, any other reports other than all the candidates? If you'd like to touch on anything, send in.
I just wanted to mention that we will be hosting the Shrine Bowl here, starting the chaperones, and staff will arrive on June 3rd. And then it goes all the way through our residence halls. Every room will be taken, and it's going to be the largest group I think we've ever had on campus in the summer. We're going to be hosting all of the band and all of the cheerleaders. And then John Walker and Great Western Dining will be feeding everyone in three shifts because the football teams will eat here some of their meals. So we're excited. It's our chance to put our best foot forward, really show off our campus. The staff that came on their pre-visit were very impressed, and so we're looking forward to working with them. They're highly organized, and it should be a great event for this campus and for Dodge City.
So if any of one would like to be chaperones for those few days, welcome.
They're bringing a pretty extensive crew. They've done it for a number of years, but we can all use help.
Chairman Harshberger, in addition to the written report, a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity with Leadership Dodge to tour the USD and go to the high school, a very impressive high school. But what was most impressive was the pathways courses that they have over there. And there are a lot of opportunities for the college to expand in the digital communications and other areas, and hopefully we can continue our partnerships with the USD and allow those students, while they're taking the high school classes, to obtain college classes and get dual credit for those and graduate with a certificate or associate's degree at the same time.
And our other four high schools are very interested also in working with us, especially in some of those nursing areas. Both of them, both the superintendents have asked me, I'll be busy with them also because they're very, very interested in doing some of those kind of things. By the way, Dave, your wife was mentioned. I think they used to do that, and they quit doing that in Spiritville, but they're very interested in doing it again, so. They miss her, by the way, tell them that.
I would just like to add that our first summer session started today, and we had several gen eds that had made and faculty back on campus.
All right, thank you all. We'll move on to action items. So first up would be the Sunflower Community Garden lease. If you've had a chance to review the final document. Entertainer motion to approve. You're still ready?
I'll move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, next up, Resolution 2019-09, student fees for student scholarships for the school year 2019 through 20.
Yes, Kansas statute provides that the board trustees may use student fees to grant student scholarships if such use is approved by the board, which it has been and acknowledged by the student government. And this resolution presented establishes the amount of those fees for the school year 1920, for which we are working on the budget.
All right, do you have a motion to approve? Someone? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question, Dr. We had, was it $700,000 that we put aside last year?
Something like that, yes, sir.
I think $600,000 the year before that. That's a 50% increase. What's the reason for the increase?
Part of it's because of going up on tuition and, not going up on tuition, but the revenue board charges. And we're trying to be more competitive with our other colleges that are in the area. Plus, we're trying to expand some of our programs, such maybe as in the future band and other areas. Now then, I raised that amount anticipating that. If we don't award those scholarships, then we won't reach that level. But in case we do start awarding scholarships for band and those other areas, then we will have the latitude to do that.
Where do most of those scholarships go to? Do they go to non-residents?
Yeah, for the most part, they do. And of course, the non-residents pay the higher fees for those. So, you know, if you're a Ford County student, you're going to pay a lower incidental fee than an out-of-state student or out-of-county resident. So they're kind of paying for their scholarship in a way.
Is the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The $900,000, has any of that go to Ford County students?
Yes, sir. Matter of fact, one of the things that I've observed, and I'm not sure, I'd have to do some additional research, but if you are an athlete from Ford County, you cannot get a Ford County scholarship because public funds cannot be used for athletics. So, for example, Ashley Nelson, who was from Dodge City High School, she could have only got a scholarship from the incidental fees, not from Ford County scholarship funds.
The, how many of those other students that get their money are not from Ford County funds but from incidental fees?
Could just then go in.
I mean, how much money does that amount to?
From the out-of-state students or?
No, for the Ford County students.
I do not know that number.
I mean, it wouldn't be very many.
Probably a handful. Now, that's just in basketball. Bev, do you happen to know for Ford County students only, for athletes?
I don't.
We're, probably, I would say between 15 and 20 would be the total number of student athletes from Ford County. Well, on Ford, thank you.
Definitely less than 25.
Yeah. On the Ford County scholarship, those come from public funds, right?
Those come from public funds, but they cannot use for athletic scholarships.
I understand, but you're only talking 15 to 20.
Correct.
Thank you.
What's the breakdown between athletics and academic on the $900,000? Have an idea? Most of that is going to be athletics, I would imagine, probably two-thirds. Now, there's going to be some other activities, as I mentioned before. If we try to expand some of the, some of the other programs, such as band and things like that, those are going to have, there are some other activities that are not considered necessarily athletics, but necessarily are support activities. Chair, the dance team. Rodeo is not considered a sport because there is no letter of intent, but yet they get to.
Seems like most of our workforce is good scholarship.
A lot of them, yeah.
Majority of them.
Yeah. And here's the thing, a Ford County student can get Ford County public funds, but they can also get the incidental fee funds. So they can kind of get both if they qualify.
We're going to, we're going to start looking at scholarships and looking at some of that, those things. I had a student just last weekend, not this weekend, but the week before, she was going to Butler. She's a local student here, our friend here. And I said, I asked her the question. I said, "Okay, you're going to Butler, did you get offered a scholarship here?" And she said, "Yes, sir, I did." She said, "I only got tuition and books." She said, "But I got a $500 scholarship for a semester at Butler." Well, that's, that's a marketing issue. In other words, books alone would be $500. I mean, we're looking at our books, our books cost us plenty of money, so we're, we've got to kind of market ourselves a little bit better. And so those, those are the kinds of things we need to start looking at. And then, really honestly, it's important that we do that.
And that's another reason that the scholarships went up, because I've kind of gone, trying to go away from the book scholarship and just say, "Here's an amount for your department." And that's, you know, because when you're looking at books and you say, let's say 300 students get $500 books, well, that's $150,000 right there. So again, trying to move away from, here's a book scholarship, to here is a pot of money, and here's what your budget is. And you might have noticed in my report, we're going to start budgeting each department and give them a certain amount, say, "Okay, here is your allotment." So maybe for welding, say, "Okay, your budget for scholarships is $20,000. I don't care how you use it." I mean, there needs to be a limit on it, you know? You can't give one student $5,000 or $6,000. But it's your budget for $20,000. It's not going to be book scholarships, it's just scholarships. So it may be $1,000. And so that's another reason that the incidental scholarships went up.
But we also noticed that in scholarships, for example, and this is something, you know, we've talked to others about, is, let's say, let's say a student gets tuition and books, but they can't couple that with, like, they get a band scholarship. Well, they got to take one or the other. But that's what's hurting us a little bit. We need, we need to be competitive. You know, when you're giving a scholarship, you've got to be competitive. And we're losing students to garden and other schools because we're not able to couple them. I call it coupling. But, so that's why we have, that's why, you know, our goal is to get as many students that are from here, here. And so whether it be from Buckland or Spiritville or whatever, I mean, that's, that's important. So we're going to get, we're trying to get aggressive about scholarships, but for a while there, they weren't able to couple those scholarships. But it's, you know, a student say, "Well, I got a tuition and fees, a tuition and book scholarship, so I'm not going to take the band scholarship." Well, wouldn't it be nice to have that student in the band also, or the choir?
Well, how, what's, how do you think this is going to affect students' bottom line out of pocket money to go with the books and scholarships like you're proposing? And just, and giving them a block, here's your budget? Well, the actual amount of scholarship may go down a little bit, but the college has limited resources. There's only so much that we have for scholarships. I think what has happened in the past is, let's say you have a book scholarship, and 300 students have a book scholarship, and they go to the book school. Bookstore gives them the books. They say, "Get a scholarship." Well, the bookstore has been buying books, say $500,000 worth of books. For those particular students, they're not getting to record any revenue on those. This is why the bookstore's been showing losses. So we're going to change that, so when you go in to get a book, it's going to be charged to your account, so your account will show a charge for books. Then you apply the amount of your scholarship, whether it's $500 or $1,000, to your total charges with it, tuition, fees, books, parking, whatever it is.
Then there's, then there's another thing also that a lot of our students complain about, is they'll forget the books, but they won't get the packets or the. They won't get the codes.
Yeah.
That's right, the codes. And they're like, "Okay, you're giving me the book, but I need, I need," the codes are much more important. And then also, if you look at it, like welders and, and, you know, our students nursing, our welding and Diesel and all that, they have to buy those pack, they have to buy those equipment. Well, that could help them buy some of those equipment. So that's kind of what we're looking at also.
Well, if the bookstore comes up showing a loss every year, what difference does it really make since we know that's what the loss is for? I mean, if we know there's going to be a loss showing up because we're discounting books or giving books for scholarships or whatever, it's just a numbers thing, right? I mean, as an accountant, I understand you're a little antsy about this, but. Well, yeah, but in a, on a budgeting aspect, you can't continue to have a bookstore operating in red because it's eventually, the money, the budget, you know, you're going to have to have cash to support that. But we have lots of things here on campus that operate in the red. Not, not an auxiliary enterprise, yeah. This is the first place I've ever been to where the bookstore is operating in a negative. Most of the time, the bookstore will operate in the black and give money back to the, to the college in the form of scholarships or other supports. Well, I've spoken about this before. I just, I just dislike this.
And a lot of our students are returning those books.
They aren't?
Yeah. Oh, yes. They, they, yeah, yeah, it's not against, that's why you, you, that's exactly why we're doing some of these things. It's because you have a large percentage, I don't know how large it is, but they don't, they drive off with a book, and then you're out of books and that kind of thing.
Well, I, you know, I, how I feel about this is, and I've always felt this way, I just think it's not okay for one student to be paying for another student's education. It's just, it's just not.
Do what now?
We've got students paying their, their fee, and that fee is going to another student paying for their education. How can that be okay? I mean.
It's not.
It's not okay. It'd be like saying to you, "Oh, I need you to pay my rent." Well, that's not okay. Pay your own rent.
See, I was on scholarship to college. I was on an academic scholarship. And I went, I went locally, but they, I mean, scholarship paid my way. But I was doing, I was student body president, so that's, that's how I ended my academic scholarship.
Well, who funded the scholarship?
The college.
Where'd they get them?
Probably from the.
Probably from alumni.
You guys don't have alumni.
I would say it'd be rare, rare, rare that other students' fees would pay another student's scholarship. Matter of fact, I think it's outrageous. But I just want to ask you.
All over Kansas.
All over Kansas.
All the schools are.
Well, I'm not saying, sure.
I'm not saying that only, it's okay.
Because it's.
I mean, you were on scholarship, I bet.
No.
You weren't?
I went to school one year, I worked one year, I went to school one year, I worked one year. Took me eight years to get through school. That's my scholarship.
So the poorest student in this college could end up paying a scholarship to for the richest student, right?
Well, either way though.
Their own bail, their federal money.
Well, that's their money, it's not yours. It, you know, the government gives it to them.
Where do they get the, where do they get that money from?
They give it to taxpayers.
They certainly didn't need it to be transferred to somebody else for a scholarship. It's to help them get through school.
They're arguing taxation, though, Terry. I mean, you're. Let's rattle this back here. Come on. Yeah, we'll move on. We'll have a debate later.
How much money is set aside from the public funds for Ford County students for their scholarships?
It's around $400,000. I think it's $387,000 this year, and I left it about the same.
But we set aside $900,000.
Well, but that's the tuition, yeah. I did not bring the scholarship. Well, maybe I did, David.
That's just a misperception. The money, hell, money comes from us.
Yeah, I'm not talking about Tom Manger.
Well, it comes from, it's the same place where the AJI Bill scholarships come from, from the taxpayers, but we're talking about individual students giving money to other individual students.
Yeah. That's really, that's really what's happening, is that I send my child to school here or any other Kansas school, whatever. But I'm paying for my student to go to school, but when my student pays to go to school, it pays that fee, which is going to some other student for a football scholarship or whatever. Which is going to expand the college, which is part of the college experience, is, part of college experience is being exposed to people from different parts of the country. And when, when we put this forth, the Student Government Association approved this. Okay, so this is the kind of college that they want. They want a college where we can give out band scholarships, bring people in from different areas, because it is bigger than, college is bigger than Ford County. It's bigger than the eight counties we serve. You go to college to expand your, everything about you, and in that is encountering people from different countries and different parts of this, these United States. That's part of college. That expansion of mind. It's not just about Ford County. It's not a glorified high school.
It is funded as a glorified high school.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. Where do you think the money comes from?
It comes from a litany of things, but primarily taxpayers.
Yes, who own it, just like they own the high school.
And we get money from the state to serve Gray County and Hodgman County and Clark County.
We don't get any money from Hodgman County or anybody else.
We get money from the state, I just said.
Yes, if they go to school.
To serve them. We're getting off subject, in.
No, I'm just talking.
There's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, and I'm.
Well, I'm still discussing you.
No.
Okay, you don't want to listen to the truth?
The truth? You're espousing nonsense.
No, I'm not.
You are. You're espousing nonsense. We're getting off your, your grandstanding here.
The $700,000 that we, or $900,000, has to be made up by the Ford County taxpayers. It's not a free thing. We subsidize every.
You're actually incorrect, Terry. Wrong. You're wrong.
We subsidize.
You're wrong.
Would you be quiet for a second and let me finish? You think you can do that?
Well, can you please espouse the truth?
I am espousing the truth.
No, you're not.
But we'll, we'll let other people decide that, okay? The fact of the matter is, is that the burden, we are subsidizing all sorts of non-residents of the state and of this county who do not pay their fair share. And we're taking another $900,000 from our taxpayers and giving it to people who don't pay 20% of what it costs to go here. Why should the Ford County taxpayers bear that burden?
Okay, Terry, so we had your way, we shut down sports, you do everything you want. You know what the, you know what the burden to the Ford County taxpayer is? Property tax is gonna go up by 35%.
Why would that be?
Run the numbers, my friend.
Well, I have.
So you just are espousing a 35% property tax increase on every Ford County owner. Yes, you are. That's why we, that's had enough, exactly what we have.
Well, I'll explain it to you. Take a $900,000 football expense, okay?
It's not that much.
No, 800,000, doesn't matter. It is. Anyway, you get 700,000.
Terry, they're all athletes in the dorms. Who's gonna pay the debt on the dorm?
You can have Ford County people.
Oh, you're gonna mandate Ford County students to live in the dorm? Come to Ford County for free, but you gotta live in the dorm?
Yes.
Oh, wow. Okay, you hear that, people? We're gonna mandate Ford County students, if they come to Dodge City Community College, you're gonna mandate you live in the dorm.
Right, because they have to be paid for, and they're already being paid for by Ford County people.
Wow. Interesting. All right, we're off subject. All right. There's a motion and a second on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify something, please?
Please do.
Ford County public funds fund $375,000 in scholarships.
Okay.
The $900,000 is from students' incidental fees, for which Ford County students will be some of the others' way.
Right.
I have a spreadsheet with the, with the budgeted numbers on it for post athletic and other...
Presidential.
Presidential and other fine arts and tech programs. Again, some of it's Ford County, and some of it comes from the incidental fee. So after we use all the Ford County fees, public funds, if there's still a Ford County student that's needing money, then they can go over it to the incidental funds. So they are also being awarded funds from other students as well. But those are, again, incidental fees funded from students.
Thank you, sir.
And the, just for a point, the people from Ford County, those kids and their parents and their neighbors are the ones that pay the $12 million for this college to operate.
Correct.
Rephrase that, please.
I said those kids who want to go to school here, right? From Ford County, they own the college. It is their parents themselves and the rest of the taxpayers of Ford County that provide the $12 million, right?
Which $12 million, you talking about, the, have they won taxes?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's how we're operated, right? Okay, so they're paying twice for their...
Well, they're paying a reduced tuition and fees, just...
No, I'm saying they, we don't, we don't order anybody at the high school to pay tuition, do we?
Oh, yes, we do.
No, we don't. It's tuition, it's forbidden in the state of Kansas.
We're either charging them tuition or fees, I don't know which ones we weigh. I was thinking we weigh fees.
Doctor, it's not tuition, that's unconstitutional. And they, if they pay any fees, it's very, very small. But the fact of the matter is, we should be concentrating on educating every single resident of this county with the $12 million that our taxpayers give us. Just like we do when we fund the high schools and grade schools, it's, it's K through 12, it's a public education. I hope to God that we will see the sanity of educating all of our students and our residents so that there is no block to any poor person coming to this college and having to pay the fee to educate someone else who doesn't live here and doesn't pay any taxes. That's what I hope.
And there was a small misstatement a while ago, the student government doesn't get to approve this, they just acknowledge.
Acknowledge.
Yeah, they acknowledge that it's gonna have to, but they don't get a chance to vote on the right thing, so...
Yeah, I'm through discussion, Garrett, if you wanna move on.
Please, yes. Listen to enough of your nonsense. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. No, I'm sorry, I meant to say no.
I'll do that again from the top.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say you sign.
Aye.
Okay, next, the ACH origination agreement from Fidelity State Bank. Dr. Fordy?
Yes, this is a agreement that we have with the, with the bank. They process all of our payroll, direct deposits. They've changed some of the terms and are just requiring a new agreement with the college. I don't believe there's any cost associated with it.
Anybody have any questions on this?
So moved.
Your second? Your second?
Yes, I'm going to...
Okay, pardon me, I didn't agree. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, beverage contract?
Uh, we went out on bid for the beverage contract, a contract with the current vendor, Pepsi, was expiring at June 30th. The bids were very close, very competitive. There were some concerns with service that had been indicated from the Pepsi food service vendor with outdated products and machines that are not, maybe functioning correctly, and just poor service on their prop, on their behalf. When you got down to it, the amount of revenues to the college over a five-year period for, for Coke and Pepsi were about $800 difference. And that's the total revenues, the revenues to the college in donations directly to the college was a little bit more than Pepsi. The other factor in, in that total $63,000 package was that the commissions off of the, of the products go to the foundation, and in that case Coke was just slightly under. But we felt that the service aspect was enough to award the contract to Coke.
Any questions, Dr. Fordy?
Just a few dollars, a few hundred dollars.
$800.
$800.
Again, the amount directly to the college was going to be more than, I think, the first year.
I thought it was $25,000 from...
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Both proposed $25,000.
Was it about $25,000? I was thinking it was a little bit more from Coke over a five-year period, to the college.
Says both Heartland and Pepsi said $25,000 over five years.
I think, I think actually Coke, that may be... Maybe it was Coke ordered the first year $7,000, and went from there. I think that's what I'm thinking. Or Pepsi was a straight $5,000 over, over the five-year period. Coke offered $7,000 the first year, and then reduced it over the years to $25.
I think there's some serious things we ought to consider on this. Do we need a motion first before we discuss it, or?
No, I hope that's for, for...
Pepsi is a huge community partner in this community. During Dodge City days and any other time, they're putting tens, tens of thousands of dollars into this community, just donated here and there and everywhere. They also are a taxpayer in Ford County, so they're helping pay for the college. Their employees, most of them live here in Ford County, so those houses and properties are helping pay for the college. $800 is nothing. I, I think this is a real slap in the face to Pepsi. And maybe we need to ask them to improve their service, get better machines or something, but I think it's really wrong to, to award this contract out of county when this, the support for this, this college comes from Ford County taxpayers. And all those people that work for Pepsi and Pepsi itself, owning property here, are just, they're, they're just, they're, they're contributing to this college just daily, you know? And Pepsi is a huge...
Did they get to see my foundation dinner?
Pepsi's a huge partner in this community, you know, for all kinds of events. And Coke's not here doing that. They're just not, they're not in it like Pepsi is. You can go down to the rodeo grounds during Dodge City days, you can go to Dog Day afternoon down the park, you can go to lots of events, and Pepsi's there, you know? And I, I just think this is, I, I think it's really starting with, for, for $800, I think it's a, you know, these are, the taxpayers that are supporting this are living in Ford County. Pepsi's in Ford County. Coca-Cola's in Finney County. You may get $800 more, and you, and these people in Pepsi, they're still gonna, they're still gonna pay their taxes since they live here. But is it fair, what we're doing? Is that really fair? I don't, I don't think it's fair to Ford County taxpayers and to Pepsi-Cola for us to, to award this contract to Coca-Cola for $800 bucks. It, it's, it's unfair. It's not right.
Another factor in, in, in having with this is when we have home football games and other activities, that because of the leftover merchandise, the, the high school...
We're forced into, for our concessions, we're forced into selling Coke products at Memorial.
And so we can't use those products here?
Right, and anything that we have, we cannot bring to our campus to use for, say, volleyball or basketball concession and things like that. And in the end, that's a, that's not a huge number. I, I recognize that, it's not a huge number, but that was one of the discussions. And also, I think, one of the things, I don't know if you have in there, Dr. Fordy, that part of the service working you get from Coca-Cola will come from a local business as well.
Well, I know just, most of the employees that, that work at Pepsi live here, and the plan is here, I mean, their operation is here, I just, that sounds like a minor, a minor problem down Memorial Stadium that could be worked out pretty easily, I think. And it's just, it, it's not right. It's just not right, so...
So, but it's, our bylaws state, though, we send these out for bids, and it's structured this way on purpose, so, and I understand what you're saying, Dan, so what is, what is the dollar amount then that's not, if $800 is in it, then where, where do we draw that line? And then, and I understand, and I'm, and I'm not arguing against you on this, understand, but history speaking, there's people around this table who have voted in much, against much different dollar amounts against other community entities because they didn't like them, they didn't agree with them. They didn't have the same political views, and so they didn't support them, so they don't wanna use them. So where do we draw these lines, and how do we follow the rules that we've laid out for ourselves, sir? Because, and again, I'm, I'm, I don't disagree with you, I understand, agree with your points, Pepsi's local, I know a lot of the people who work there, just as we all do. But where, where do we have to draw these lines at? And where are we going to stand on our morals on this so that we do support our local entities when those things come up in future things? Because I would say if we support this, that needs to be the course for all of things. And everybody sitting around this table needs to understand that then, when they make those votes against local entities. And I'd say it needs to get carried on to the USD too, so, and a few other public entities if we wanna really go that far. I'm getting off subject, so...
USD has a rule that if they, if the bid is close, that they can take the local vendor, or they can take a vendor that has a good reputation, if the other one doesn't have a great reputation for providing that service. It's a construction thing.
Does that include construction?
It's usually a construction, or a bid on board, so...
But when we were on the board, they voted in Coke at USD.
Was that counted?
That's when they were on the board, that's when, back in those times, that's when it started, that they did the bids, and Coke was voted in for the USD.
USD, you're not talking about the same funding stream. The funding is coming for USD from the state, almost all of it, where the funding for this organization comes from Ford County, almost all of it.
You might wanna look at your taxes.
You must be not paying like what I'm paying.
I'm not saying I'm not paying, I'm not saying I'm not paying taxes on USD, I'm saying millions of dollars come from the state for USD, and however, we're not getting the same funding from the state for this organization.
This Coca-Cola has the low bid, correct, Dr. Fordy?
Actually not. Revenue, there's more, $800 more revenue from Pepsi. Now, let me say this, I don't carry the wine, I don't, I don't drink, eat soft drinks, I drink water. You should be glad to hear that, Dr. President.
That's not my candidate.
And the recommendation, I think, the recommendation from the committee was just based on, on the, the service and the number of complaints that we've had from Pepsi, and we've, we've contacted Pepsi a number of times, they continue to have outdated products and the machines, we just got one today. And that's, that's, again, that's the basic reason.
But we're, you know, y'all, we're trying to look at other, the board kinda wants us to look at other things, kinda like our accounting. We've been using the same accounting firm for 27 years. We're using somebody different now because of some of the things that were going on, you know? They didn't, they didn't bid for. We'll be happy to use all Ford County if we can.
Well, how do you explain to Pepsi that they had the low bid and yet they didn't get it?
I think service, yeah. I think, and, and they know, because we've sent them emails, we have, we have several emails, and it's not, just not an isolated case, several email where their products are outdated, or the machines did not provide, you know, the product, or kept somebody's money or something like that. And it's a, it's a situation where if you want the business, you ought to provide the service and make, make sure that your machines and everything are working correctly.
Okay. Well, I think everybody here really wants to support Ford County businesses, but sometimes you gotta have a little competition. So there is a, a recommended action for approval, so I'm gonna take a motion to approve. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
The, I think Dan makes some good points, and I would say, I'm glad to say that neither Pepsi nor Coke has ever attempted to dissolve the college. And if they did, I wouldn't be voting for either one.
Oh, it's a whole nother thing, I'll explain it to you guys later. I've got my comment.
And it's directed to Chair James' comments.
Yeah, it's, we'll discuss it later, Adam. It's not productive for the meeting. So get on with your business.
I think, I think I'm going to support the Heartland Coca-Cola, and I feel that way because a committee has made this recommendation, and if we're not, if we're gonna form committees and ignore the recommendations, then we're not a very professional, effective board.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie?
All right.
Next up is two Tiger utility vans.
Yes. Uh, we had one of our vehicles, and these are the primary vehicles for which we support our food products and mail and other packages around the campus. One of the vehicles that we operated is, is inoperable, and we can't get it repaired. While it is being used, if one of them is being used, for example, making mail runs and things like that, then we can't be making, making runs over to the childcare center delivering food products. So it was recommended, and we went on a bid to purchase two of these. We have funds budgeted into transportation, part of the budget to, for these, these vehicles, and it is recommended that we buy them from Tiger Utility Vans out of Oklahoma.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Mr. Chairman, real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
Just because you said childcare center, were we okay with the rain over there?
Yes.
Good.
Absolutely. No water whatsoever. We got that fixed.
These are actually covered vehicles, so the, the items that are being delivered in these vehicles will be totally enclosed and protected until when we moved into Pointe and Pointe, which was the entire purpose of doing... Point A to Point B, which was the entire purpose of doing this, this way.
And so new carpet isn't being installed in the childcare.
A little bit too much.
Bruce, fan control?
A little bit too much.
Can we turn the fans down just a touch?
No, he has to, he can turn it down.
He's got a better handle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lance.
Thank you. Okay. So, we'll move on to item F, the night custodial operations.
We have had, been having difficulty filling some of our positions at night. Not only that, we've been having trouble with some of our night custodians, a lot of personnel issues, as Christie can attest to. So in an effort to perhaps look at other alternatives, I know other colleges are doing this, and we went out to see what services are available for outsourcing the services. Service Master was the only one that, that, that bid in the area. One of the things that we looked at here was the, also the quality of services, and we, we did get a lot of complaints from faculty and staff that the job, the current staff that we had, were not doing a good, very good job. And one of the things, when you outsource, the company that you bring in, they want to keep your business, and so they want to, they want to do a good job for you. It was mentioned about security concerns, I think you could also have security concerns with current college staff, as well as an outside staff as well, but they are usually bonded, but we'll, we'll double check into that. But this will also decrease the college payroll and the number of staff involved, should save the college some additional funds, as well as, again, issues with the, with the personnel department, HR, and other factors.
Because there's such high turnover, do you have a great deal of difficulty with training and retraining?
Well, there is another factor, yes, trustee, that's a big issue. Train somebody, and three to six months later, they're gone, because they can find another higher paid job, especially given the current economic conditions, there's, there's people, there are a lot of businesses in town looking for, for good people, and so it's hard to keep, keep custodians.
Thank you.
Glenn, are they willing to make some of the changes to the contract that you recommended?
They made all the changes that they recommended. That contract that's in the board packet is the revised one, and all the changes that we requested were made.
And so the twenty-five dollar thing's done away with?
Yes.
Okay. It bothered me just a little bit, as I read through here, that they're only gonna dust furniture once every three months.
Some people don't like their stuff dusted, because sometimes people who dust tend not to be careful, and they break things. So I would probably just keep my door locked, put my trash can aside, and say, do not enter. I'll vacuum myself.
Are you covered under workers' comp?
Maybe, just for a vacuum cleaner, I may be okay. I could run one of those.
Kind of the bottom line here is this, your proposal would save the college three hundred and twenty-two thousand?
No, that's, the net savings is probably gonna be around between fifteen, seventy thousand.
Okay. All right.
I think it sounds good. I move we proceed.
How long is the contract?
This is just a one-year contract. So we'll evaluate, see how good they do, and.
A second? There is a motion and second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thank y'all very much.
Will it have to be signed those letters anymore?
We'll have to sign a bunch, one more time.
So, the fit and bows agreement?
Our current lease on the postage machine has expired, and this is to enter into another agreement for another five-year period.
So moved? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Can Ren agreement?
Last month, the board approved the college going forward with Can Ren to provide our broadband service. This is the agreement that goes along with that service.
Nothing's been changed, they were the same numbers?
Same numbers, and I verified that the membership fees are, were included in the original broadband quotes.
And this is just kind of finalizing the agreement?
This will speed up things considerably.
Oh, yeah, when you go from two fifty, yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. All, any, does the motion approve?
So moved.
Second, second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. Item I, two thousand nineteen club car.
This is actually, club car's probably not a good term for this, maybe it's a courtesy vehicle, kind of like what you see maybe when you go to the amusement park, but we have a lot of recruits with parents and sometimes grandparents that come on campus, and sometimes there are people that are just not able to navigate and mobilize around the campus, and this will help move them around. It will also be helpful, for example, when we have the foundation to shuttle people from their vehicles out in the parking lot to, to the front of the, from the dome, but this was something that had been requested from various areas of the college. We went out on bid, and the lowest bid was from M and M Golf Clubs.
This is like a six-person?
Six-person, it'd be three seats, and I think you can get two, you might be able to get more than six on it if they're small.
I move approval.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? So, new position, a webmaster.
Do you want to take it?
No, go ahead, I'm getting a little dry.
I was gonna say, you've had the mic all day today. It's your lucky board session. Okay, so in front of you have the job description for a new position potentially, for a webmaster, so this will be housed in the IT department, it will be responsible for all of our, so our dc3.edu website, our Canvas, our My DC Three web, and any other websites that are under our umbrella, they'll be in charge of. They'll help departments make their own websites, update their websites, make sure that it's useful, make our website more user-friendly. Marketing got us a new website about two years ago, I think Andrea and her team did that, and so now we need the maintenance, is how Dr. Forrie described it. So they, this company came in and built this website, but now we don't have someone's staff that can maintain it. And so that will be what this position is, and Dr. Forrie's had it previously in institutions, and we think it'd be a good asset. Any specific questions? Dr. Forrie knows a little bit more about the IT.
Well, one of the things that, that I would say, again, on the, on the website, is this is, a lot of, a lot of students and parents, this is their first point of contact with the college, and your website really needs to make an impression, and when you can't find things on the website, and things are outdated, and I'll give, for example, I went out there to look for the strategic plan, I don't, this is before I was hired, I found it eventually, and it was from two thousand thirteen. And so I think it's better sometimes not to have even that out there at all, if it's not gonna be kept up to date. But that doesn't give a good first impression, when you don't have current information out of your website. And, and people get busy, and they have stuff to do, and it's kind of like it's in the back of their mind, and so this is why a person like this, to help refresh, I won't say necessarily redesign, but to make it, make the website a lot more user-friendly, because when you have to continue to click and search and hunt and find, potentially you just want to give up. And we don't want students and parents to do that.
Well, we do want somebody who can design well enough to make it pop, though, I mean.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and this is in the, and this is in the description, you want a web designer. I, I would prefer to have an updated web designer, not a web agent.
But you know what, what the deal is, is easily you're, for those people that use websites, and everybody does now, you know, if you're eighteen years old, you're using websites or younger, but you, you're three clicks away. And if you, if you can't find what you want in three clicks, I, you go to another, you go to a different website. And some, one of our conversations that we were having recently was, you know, we need someone that connects our, you know, our athletics with, with, you know, with, with our choir and our band, and all those kind of things, all, you know, our foundation, along with our marketing. So these are, these are very, very important, to have these, have these things where you can, they're all in sync and all working together. You gotta have that. I mean, in this day and age, I mean, you know, this is the first school I've ever been to that we don't have a virtual tour of campus. We need a virtual tour of campus. I mean, I need to know what that, I need to know, I can sit there, find out what's in that dorm, which dorm I want to be in, those kind of things, or what kind of stu, or what kind of faculty member, I want to be able to look at that, what's their credentials, what do they look like, all those kind of things. So this is all that, I'm trying to get us out of the seventy, no, eighties, whatever, I don't, you know, but part of it is because, you know, we are, we are recruiting, and I want, I want our, I want our recruiting to be able, our admissions people to be able to say, you know, as well as a golf cart, I mean, this, these are things, we've got a, we've got a beautiful campus, we've got fantastic faculty and staff, and I want them to see that. And if we can get them on this campus, and they can get on this campus with clicks, then we're gonna probably win them over.
Another thing is, we want some standardization within the departments and things like that, we want a similar common format. And now athletics will have its, kind of, you know, they have the comp, but the head and everything, the logo, the athletic logo, but for the academics and other areas, you know, the shield is the logo. So you kind of want that standardized, or your branding, it's very important, and so you kind of want that commonality between all the webpages, and you don't want the music department to have one, you know, format, and, you know, the English department to have another format, you kind of want it to all look similar.
And we talked, it could potentially be cost-saving down the road as well, because if we have a webmaster that can update our website, we might be able to get rid of some of our external sites for some of our other things that we use, maybe not all of them, but we do pay for external sites for other departments, so if we had someone that was qualified to house under one, it would, there'd be cost savings.
I would hope that we hire somebody, that they'll be able to, to do those things, I mean, they're a full-time person.
And, and it may be difficult. It may be difficult to find somebody like that here, I don't know, in the Dodge area, although, I tell you what, the students over at the high school are very, very talented, and I hope we might be able to hire somebody out of there, maybe they, they may not have all the, you know, the requirements, but anyway, there, there's some very talented students, but.
He has a scholarship.
He has a scholarship right now.
He has approximate salary estimate.
So, so we did, so for this position, and then the position that you pulled off, the personnel item as well, we've done a market survey for these positions, we've done the regional area versus the national area, in addition to our industry as a whole. So we haven't landed on a salary for this one yet, it'll obviously depend on the credentials of who's hired, but we think maybe we'll have a range, but it's not, we're not just coming up with a number, it's all based on a market survey.
Yeah, I'm kind of guessing mid-fifties, and this will be in next year's budget, not this year's budget.
I just think it'll, it'll help us get where we need to be.
You know, we're trying, wherever we can reduce, as you can tell, we're reducing, wherever we can, but we need some other things that we, just like, I mean, our, our IT system was pretty archaic, we were the only ones with it.
Maybe we better hire a little team of three or four nerds from the high school, put this together, maybe we do well. Stop paying fifty thousand.
So did you, there's obviously one correction that Maya found, just a typo on my part, is there anything else that you all felt needed to be added or revised on this job description?
Do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
About a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I move, partly because yesterday I was looking for something good and bad.
I think, I think Mr. Malone did the same thing. Tell me that twice.
This is all about, kind of, improving our business, presenting, stepping up into the future, so we've got to, got to make strides. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, next up is the new item we have, we gotta hand out, so.
Yes, hello, good evening, trustees, this is a request for action regarding the use of the Student Activities Center on November the second, two thousand nineteen, for our auction. That will be coming up. We have already met with our auction committee, and athletics, and administration to try and land on a date, we even contacted USD four-four-three, because we had an issue with playoff games last year, and according to USD four-four-three, we wanted to have it on November first, that Friday evening, however, there is a great possibility that they will end up in the playoffs, and if they do, they will host them, and so that will significantly reduce our attendance. So we did move it to Saturday, November the second, and we are asking the board to approve that date for us, in the Student Activities Center, due to the policy of the series number seven oh eight, regarding alcohol use on campus. So we are asking for your consideration to approve November second as the date for the auction in the Student Activities Center Dome on campus.
Motion to approve? I would move to adopt the motion regarding the use of alcohol on campus in this one instance. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I, I haven't. I was at the women's chamber today, and we were talking about the foundation and all the things that the college is doing, and I had three people say they did not know we had this last year. There was not any information out there, so could we make sure that our webmaster and our media people all make sure God City knows that we have it going?
And I was, and I was just like you guys. I was in the chamber newsletter. Yeah.
I don't know how anybody could.
We have a webmaster, we'll blame all the way.
Perhaps, perhaps we can get our electronic sign working and put it on there as well.
Absolutely.
Right.
I'm working on it.
All right. There is been a motion, and it's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. So move, the item is, we'll have intended new business. Okay, so we'll move on to new business, so we'll do resolution two thousand nineteen dash ten, non-renewal faculty.
Mr. Chairman, the three resolutions are required to look at in succession now, or in follow-up to action for April, to show intent on renewing certain instructors' contracts for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year. First resolution, number two thousand nineteen ten, is a resolution to non-renew the faculty employment contract of Brian Gaddy.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, next up?
Two thousand nineteen eleven is a resolution to non-renew the faculty employment contract of Stanley Sanco. Mr. Sanco had available to him to request due process, but he did not request due process.
Do I have a motion to approve? Some move? Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay.
Resolution two thousand nineteen twelve is a resolution to non-renew the faculty employment contract of Jeffrey Cole. Mr. Cole also had available to him to request due process, but he did not request due process.
Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
I will bring up out of consent agenda, item 1E, approval of part-time employment contracts.
I was wondering, what, what are these, what are these employees for? Who they, I mean, who we hiring and.
Oh, oh, my spreadsheet, oh. Dr. Ford, do you want to explain it or help me too?
Sir, which one?
The, our adjunct and our workforce development spreadsheets for the supplemental overload.
Oh, is that with the construction?
Is it overload faculty, is that what you're?
So, so what it is, is our, so some of these are current faculty, right? So Sherri Curtis is one of them, Lois is one of those, and Patrick Shu. So they are current faculty members and when they teach, the negotiated agreement, which I'll let Jane correctly come wrong, negotiated agreement requires a minimum of 30 credit hours throughout their 160-day contract. Then anything over that or additional is paid in either overload or a supplemental contract. And so this is additional outside of their base.
I'm okay with that, I was just hoping when we're hiring new part-time people.
Sometimes they're all, so if you look at, not in this month, but like, I think October was a quite large month. And I believe April was as well, if I remember correctly. And so you might select independent states or outreach coordinators. Those might be capable, maybe we hired that year, but they do, they teach in high schools and they're adjuncting and they're outreach.
Okay.
If we're looking at this page where Sherri Curtis is listed under academic supplemental pay, she's being paid 2,700 for her role as a STEM activities coordinator. And that comes through our L.S.A. program.
Well, I understand the, the faculty overload thing, I just was, it wasn't, I really wasn't knowing what these part-time people were for, so.
These aren't actually part-time people.
These are full-time faculty who are doing overload.
Lois, Cephas, and Patrick Shu were part-time. Marcella Warner is an adjunct. She was at one time a full-time employee, but there were fours under ad. But now she's an adjunct, and so that's adjunct pay. Or probably an independent study that would indicate to me that there were very few students enrolled in that course. So we prorated as an independent study.
Yeah, I don't know why it's called part-time on the agenda, we could change that. It's just supplemental.
I'm making that motion, I made the motion that we accept the contracts as stated on page 111 and 112 of the, of our board packet in regards to the new supplements and adjunct pay.
My second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Item four, out of business services, my financial statements.
Dr. Ford, you noticed on the, on your sheets that you printed for us, we have vehicle and helicopter leases. How much of that is vehicle on campus here and how much of it is for helicopter leases there or something?
The helicopter lease would be under the column three.
Okay.
Which is the 383,000.
And?
That's what's budgeted.
That's what's budgeted, we haven't spent that this year.
What we've spent is 351,324.
This year?
Probably early in the year. I don't think it's changed much because we haven't done any business.
I'd have to back up Mr. Ford, but I'm pretty sure we haven't, that number hasn't changed any. I don't think we've done any business.
I'm pretty sure we haven't done any business, we haven't had any, had any authorization to do.
We will this summer.
Yeah, it was all last summer.
Yeah.
July, I would agree.
Okay, Van, I had one other question on your sheets. We had listed, you had listed litigation. What's that for?
Well, that's legal fees, basically.
Well, I know what it is, but I mean, I know what litigation fees are.
What, what is it for?
What are we using it for? Is it, is it what we're paying down in Arizona or?
Well, Arizona would be probably under, yeah, that's gonna be partly that. And then all of our other legal costs are included in that category.
But not Glenn's salary, because he's an employee.
No, he's not.
Oh, he's not an employee, always?
No. No, he's, no, he's, he's a.
He's probably the biggest part of this.
He's an independent contractor.
Yes, he is.
You're doing well, my shit. 314,000?
Oh, I'm only a small part of it.
But, so we are, I know it's another place we'd spent, oh, 100 and some, not 100 and some thousand, but 2,700 or so down Arizona for Baskin's on the check, on the checks.
Oh, on the checks, okay. I, I might say about the Arizona litigation down there, that is insured. And so whatever we pay out, we are getting back in. I think our, I think our cap is at a million dollars, but I think we'll still be able to offset any expense this next fiscal year with, with revenue. So the net cost to the college should be.
So if we see a check and the check registered to Baskin's, then that's gonna be reimbursed as through insurance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But our, our other ones, our other ones now, he's, he goes through the insurance also is our Van Alman and, and the other, other like. Those are probably in there too.
That goes through insurance also.
Yes. But I, I want, I want to make sure that you understand, in order to make sure that we have sufficient budget, I will budget that expense, but also budget the revenue.
Okay.
So, Dr. Ford, are, are, on the litigation, are you saying that, that 300 or 229,044 is actually an expense or not?
It is, it has been paid this year.
Okay, but I mean, it, do we, is it reimbursed?
Yes, there's others, up there in the revenue section, other sources, it'll be part of this 1,687,077.
Because virtually all of it's being paid by insurance.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You might notice on this report that our personnel costs are almost $700,000 and, under budget this year so far. So we've been very frugal in, in that area. Most of that is in the area of adjuncts and other, but even, even the administration professional full-time staff, it's almost 200,000.
I think we've gone from, what, 11 administrators to six? And, I mean, it's, it's amazing, I know, I told Kristi, and I said, Kristi, I'm sorry. I think people think we have a large population of people out here that work here. It's been going down quite fast. I think it's around, you know, 225 people, somewhere around that, is that the number right?
Close to that.
And it was much larger than that. And part, that's part of our job is, is to go ahead and reduce those numbers.
In the work session earlier today, Dr. Nolte asked if I could pull a report that maybe shows where we were five years ago versus today. So I think, I think that's a great idea and I couldn't get it done today, but I think I'll try to have that for you for the next board meeting. Because we, especially this last year, Dr. Nolte and I and others went through it. We eliminated a lot of positions, we turned a lot of positions to part-time. Although some might think that we're increasing salaries in areas, yes, in some areas, but overall we've reduced significantly. So it'd be nice to show you the numbers, so.
How many of those are full-time faculty? How many of those numbers do you know?
We, of reductions.
Are you 200, no, 225, whatever you said?
Oh, we have 50, well, uh, so this year, so in my iPad report, we have about 55 full-time faculty. So.
And then how many adjuncts?
Oh goodness, that's a little bit more, it was a little bit, it was a little bit less this year since Arizona was not flying this year. But when our flight adjuncts are on there, it's a significant number.
I would add, when we talk adjuncts, I think when we categorize it for the purpose of payroll, we also include our outreach instructors under that.
Correct.
Those people who are teaching in the high schools, for instance, that we pay, they're considered adjunct in that category. I mean, for me, traditional adjuncts, though, we have really quite few.
It's hard to get adjuncts here, this part of the world comparatively. You're not in a large populous area, so it's, it's much tougher to get someone with a master's degree or the appropriate credentials for, for that. So that's, that's been one of my struggles is I had it my last two institutions before, I had over 350 adjuncts.
Yeah, I, I just think, you know, well, I know it may be hard to hire full-time faculty too, but I, I think in the long run, a college is better off hiring full-time faculty that are dedicated to, you know, to the job of teaching.
Oh, I agree. And, and Jane and Kristi have done an absolutely wonderful job in, in hiring some very competent, capable people. Now, we, we get, we do get beat out by salary sometimes, but we try not.
Let's change that.
That's what we're working on.
Market-based pay.
Yeah.
Market, yeah, market-based pay would be great. I, I mean, that's why we have one of the best nursing programs in the state. And you can ask any of our nurses, thanks to, thanks to the board.
I know we have a great nursing program. Let's get a great program in every part of the country.
Took market-based pay to get it there. So, thank you. Right. Okay, do I approve, a motion to approve the financial statements as presented? Is there a second? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, on personnel, item B, number four, systems engineer.
I'm just coming up with questions.
The new title, was there, it's a huge salary increase. I mean, 35% salary increase. Was there a degree earned with this or more certification term?
So, the background on this, so Mike Wexler, Director of IT, wrote, wrote a pretty extensive memorandum to Dr. Ford and myself, kind of appealing for this. And so what he did was a breakdown of what systems engineers are getting paid across the country in the area, a current breakdown of everything that Tyson is doing that is above and beyond, not even close to what his job description is anymore because he's taken on so many responsibilities. He has done a lot of stuff that is not, and I'll let Dr. Ford specify the difference between the positions because I'm not an IT expert, but what he was doing, or what his job description is, is what he started at. And he's grown and developed, he's done professional development, he's gone to trainings and conferences. He's working, he's working completing his associate's degree currently and going back to school. So all of that went into account. And then additionally, like I said, in the work session today, we, we did do a market survey of this position and similar positions. We did go on the lower end of the median. I understand it is a substantial raise for him, but to, if he were to leave and if we were to replace him, we wouldn't be able to, it would be much more, is essentially what we can't include. But go, go ahead, you know the specifics.
Yeah, but basically what he is, a PC tech is his current title.
Correct.
Which is basically somebody who you call up and say, I'm having trouble with my computer. They come in and they check your connections or something like that, or they connect, set up computer labs. They're not system engineers, they're not out there checking on servers and then doing all the stuff on the network like Tyson is. And I was asking Kristi today about labor laws. And I said, if, if you're doing substantially more than what your title says you're doing, aren't you violating your, your labor laws? And she's, she confirmed that, that we, that it's a possibility. But it's in order to get somebody like this in this area, we probably couldn't. Matter of fact, Tyson was being, I guess you might say recruited. But I'm always one of the opinion, talking about fair market, things like that. When a person is doing exceedingly above and beyond more than what their duties are required, responsibilities require, be kind of like asking me to go teach music. You wouldn't want to do that. But, I mean, that's a bit, that's, it's beyond my responsibility and, and beyond my technical expertise. And a PC tech really does not have the technical expertise the system engineer would have. We're talking about, you know, a lot of difference.
Well, I know.
It's kind of like a, a nurse and a doctor, okay? Nurses do certain things.
There's a level of training involved in that.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I would say about the degree requirements, in, in the technology today, it's not so much about degrees, it is about certifications.
I know.
And he has done significant professional development.
But he is being asked to do a, a whole lot more, especially since we're going to this Ginsbar ERP system.
But what certifications does he have? Does he have Microsoft certification? Does he have certifications, Cisco certifications? Has he gotten any certifications?
I don't think we have any Cisco networking products.
Here goes out.
Yeah. But I understand what you're saying.
I didn't, I didn't pull them with me, but I don't know off the top of my head what certifications he has.
In order to get a, in order to get a title, a systems engineer, it seems like you need a degree or you need a certain, maybe not a degree, but you need, at least need certifications. And the reason I know this is I paid for a lot of them. My son's a, does this stuff in, in Seattle. So I know there's a, I know there are certifications that you have, have in order to go do these jobs.
My son's.
Can we get him here? Yeah, I know, I know what he's making. Man, man, how much is he making?
I have no idea.
My son's a PC tech, he didn't do this type of stuff.
Dr. Ford, you indicated that we're reducing the payroll. How much have we been able to reduce it in the last year?
The payroll total?
I, actually, I might be a little too long.
This is, this is a 35% increase. You know, we sat here and discussed this and, you know, the, the faculty, we thought, let's give 55 faculty members $17,000. And now we're giving one person $15,000. And y'all said we didn't have $17,000 to give to the faculty, you know?
Well, this will be, this will be effective till I want, so this is in next year's budget.
Kristi, how do you view this?
It's a 35% increase in pay. And we're offering our teachers 1.75. We might be able to offer more next year.
That was last year's, you're, you're going with last year's contract.
I know, but that's what we're still negotiating, isn't it?
Nope.
No, we're, we're negotiating next year's. We're done with the.
We're done with last, we're done with last year.
What did we do with last year? What did we finally end up giving them?
The 200.
275 bucks, right?
Twice, yeah, twice.
So, so we might be able to give them more next year. And I probably shouldn't say a whole lot more better.
Am I the only one embarrassed by this, that we gave our faculty 275 bucks?
Well, this would be similar to, for somebody, I would say, from going from a faculty position to a vice president position. So.
Did you get a raise when you went from faculty to vice president?
I received a pay increase when I moved from faculty to the dean. And part of that increase was justified by extending my pay over 12 months rather than the nine. And then there was, I think, a little bit beyond that. And I did then receive an increase when I moved from dean to vice president.
So, so again, when you move from here to here, there should be a related, now, is it 35%? Maybe that, but that's what market says that we should be paying.
And again, if, if he left and we hired someone in his place, we wouldn't be able to hire someone at this rate. And so that's part of it as well. And then, and also, like Dr. Ward did as part of, I mean, Tyson has been a loyal employee for 13 years, he's been here.
And I would assume that he wasn't awarded a significant increase with each of his certifications and.
Correct, he has not.
What certifications does he have, though?
I apologize, I didn't bring his personnel file, I didn't bring his certifications.
And we're requiring our, some of our faculty to go get a four-year degree. I don't think there's anything with requiring him to go get certifications, say, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna give you a raise this much this year and by next year you have to have this certification. You know?
You have to have Microsoft certification.
And then we raised, like, for example, our nursing program, we raised those salaries more than 207,000. I think it was with the, for this, it was, it was significant amount that we raised every one of those, those nursing salaries to pretty good. I mean, our, our nursing salaries are really good now. And I'd love to do that with all our programs.
Well, I, I guess I'm having as much trouble with the raise as I am with the, with the, giving a, a title of systems engineer when he's nothing close to an engineer, to a computer. I mean, he's, he's nothing close to that.
I think Dr. Ford, you might be able to share more specifically what he's doing day-to-day that is already fulfilling this job description.
Well, I mean, the Ginsbar is, is one aspect. He also monitors our voice-over-IP system. He monitors and checks the, call it different servers, the mail system. I could go on and on with the different systems that he is, has responsibilities for. Engineer, if we're hung up on the title, and that, I can't gut that kind of mic, that's kind of what he did some research in the information technology world. That, he felt was the description that closely resembled what Tyson was doing. Now, what we consider an engineer and what, you know, for like a, for maybe like a building or something, maybe that's a different. But he goes out there and builds, actually builds within the network programs and he's able to withdraw data and, and things like that for us. But he goes out there and builds, actually builds within the network programs and he's able to withdraw data and, and things like that for us. So there's just a variety of, of job responsibilities that he does.
I know. And my son is building a, a network for six hundred Microsoft employees, but they would never call him an engineer, never.
What's his title?
He's a, he's a, I don't know what he is.
He's not an engineer, though. But he's. Maybe a network administrator, although I think, do we already have a network administrator? Or maybe that?
We're gonna adjust the title to that, if that's what you feel.
We can come back at the June meeting.
Yeah, because this is for July one. I mean, we have time.
Could you, could we table it until we get the certification and look at the titles? Would that?
That would, that would help. Listen, I mean.
Can you tell us what your son's making to?
No, I don't. Well, I could find out, sir. But network administrator, network administrator sets a lot better with me than, than systems engineer.
Sure. That's great feedback. No, we're open to.
Well, I don't want it to be an arbitrary name. It needs to be appropriate for the title that he has, for the job that he is fulfilling, though. So I don't know that network administrator is going to fulfill everything that he is doing either. So I, let's make sure that we're not just doing it to argue semantics. Let's make sure it's appropriate for all.
We can get back with Mike. He, he defined why pretty specifically, so, but we can run it by him and see if he has another preference.
They're both a Gins, Ginsu bar trading record.
Yeah, they're gone this whole weekend.
I think San Diego.
I'll get some feedback from Seattle.
We could do like they did at Cheers, is give Woody a, a title instead of a raise. That'd be cheaper. On the Cheers TV show.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm all for paying people.
Maybe he'll go just for the title.
I'm all for paying people what they're worth and what, and what they're, you know, for what they're doing. But boy, thirty-five percent increases a lot. And especially since we've debated how poor we are when it comes to faculty raises. And I, you know, I just think that we ought to.
We're, we're actually fourth in the state, so we're not doing too bad.
Fourth in which?
It raises, I think it's salaries.
That's where everybody knows your name, right, Christie Milan?
All right, well, listen it again, if that's okay, everybody.
Okay, so, since we start a table list till next month until we get a little more information on.
Dan, send your son the job description and see what he thinks will be called in Seattle.
Okay.
That would be interesting.
It would be, you know, that'd be a little interesting, I think it would be. And I'll ask what he does. I know, I know what he's working on now, though. If you're working salaries and some.
I mean, for the, for the dollar amount.
Ask him what he thinks about the salary.
Yeah. And you know what he could tell me? He's gonna say, for Dodge City, that's not bad.
Didn't have a new back.
No, it's the low, it's the lower end for the southwest Kansas region.
Yeah, I mean, the, we went through this at a different place and we had to find a person and it was, it was difficult. And it is, you have a good person, this goes back to market-based pay, market-based pay. You got a good person that's doing a good job for you and didn't go out in marketplace and try to replace them. This part of the country, certain sectors are very, very difficult. I agree. This would be difficult. So we don't want to lose a good person. And paying somebody what they're worth is, is what I think we're all about.
I met someone that, that does that in Austin, Texas, and she, I, I, luckily I didn't embarrass her. I asked her her salary and it was three hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, and keep in mind, he's worked for thirteen years at the same rate and faculty raise rate. And because everybody, the faculty and the staff get the same rates and, or have, at least during my tenure on the board. And so he's done the same thing with increasing job duties. If we task a faculty member with increased overload, we know they're, if we just approved it, they get paid more. Um, if we ask anybody else to do additional work, they get paid more. He has continued to do his word and do more work.
And more work.
And more work. And now hopefully is continuing to strive and improve himself. And so this is not a person that we should be ignoring and disrespecting and potentially losing and replacing at twice the cost.
It's somebody we want to keep, you're right. We'll, we'll pick this back up, Christie, next month and then bring those certifications.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll see what I have.
Title and see if that's.
I'm, I'm not sure what he has, yeah.
Okay. All right, next up is the Assistant Professor of Bands, resignation acceptance.
Please, I just want to have a one, two cents input here. I hope that as we go out and look for our new band instructor, that we don't put in there the things we expect from them, that they start a marching band. We can't get a marching band. We can't afford a marching band. We're not gonna ever have a marching band here. So it's ridiculous to put it in to the requirements of this band teacher start a marching band. It's just not gonna happen. You don't have the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the uniforms and the instruments. You don't have the fifty students it'll take to get a little tiny marching band. And, and we're never gonna get them. And besides that, those instruments are expensive, extremely expensive. Probably another hundred and fifty thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars. We're not gonna do it. So let's don't, let's don't say that this guy, I think it's all good, great and good to have a pet band or whatever we want to call it, but to say that we want you to come in and part of the requirement is that you start a marching band. It's just ridiculous.
I, I totally agree. But put that down. I want, in the next four years, I want to prove to you differently. I guess, I've done these before. And part of it is, is I, we've got a, we've got one of the finest bands in the country, right across the street.
I agree.
Right across the street.
I agree.
And for us to have four or five members of a band is not what I, I, you're right. You're, Dan, you're totally right. And that's, that, that's the thoughts is, let's get a pet band first and then let's work it up. I mean, I hate seeing ten students go over to Garden and live in housing over in Garden and be in their band because they don't want to be in our band. So my goal is, we're losing students, you know, and, and, and that's, that's the problem here. I want, I want to get students to be happy to be here. I want to make, I want to make you guys proud of this.
Well, once we build this band thing up, then if we want to put it back in as part of the, the requirements for a band teacher, that he start a marching band, fine, but to put it out there now when we're getting ten or twelve people in a band, you know, I mean.
I totally agree.
Let's be realistic about it.
Totally agree.
Be realistic, but I think what we had, the capacity for the targeted hundred and fifty scholarships or scholarships?
Yes.
And I think that's a, a good goal, especially when you know the, the talent pool we have across the street. And we need to be pulling them here. And whether it's thirty, forty, whatever it is, we need to have a big goal because we want those students here.
I don't think this college has ever had a marching band. I mean, I went here.
We had a pet band.
I went here, I went here in the early sixties, there was no big marching band. There's pet band.
I do appreciate your concerns and I think we're, we're making a real effort to, to look at applicants who have actual experience with bands of the type we're looking at. And I, and I think that we will be able to attract candidates who have that background. And I think that'll make a difference. Won't completely counter all of your concerns. But I think the last two band instructors we've had, uh, didn't have a lot of experience with these types of bands.
They were more musical instruction.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not their fault.
Well, they were performers.
Yeah, they were performers. And so we, we need to find someone that really has the experiences. And that's, well, my last band was a hundred and fifty. My band before that was about, it was smaller, much smaller, it was like only a hundred. So, uh, you know, what can be done? I hate to, I hate to.
If you can track the right person in here, I know who the right person is, but I'm not sure he'd come here.
Anyway. We, we, I tell you, we, we lost a really good one, you guys. Mr. Stone, I don't know if you know Mr. Stone at the high school. I always have Comanche, but he, he's going off to get his master's degree, but I sure wish I could have got him.
Okay. Okay, I think we got a good, a good goal ahead of us and then we'll see how it all evolves. But you know, I talked to the music department over at the high school and asking how many times has somebody from the college been over to talk to them or their students? And that is just wrong.
It is wrong.
We ought to be over there in full force just wanting those students.
Faculty and, and staff should be over there. And talking to the band and orchestra kids.
Every day.
Because those are two, and vocal music, those are three great programs over there that we ought to be tapping into.
And Glennon was there for what program that, that you said they had ninety students for?
That was their digital communications, which is a lot of virtual reality games and designs. But yeah, that, that was just one aspect. And they had, had that program, uh, I guess at Garden, and Garden dropped it. But they have ninety students over there in that program that, uh, so, I mean, that's, uh, that's a lot. And I think they're gonna start drone technology. And I think we have maybe something like that here, but they're really good. I mean, the high school's really got a lot of the.
They've got some really good things over there.
Yeah. They do. They, they went to nationals in forensics this year, so, and did fairly well.
Do we need a motion for the resignation acceptance? So moved.
I do second, yeah.
Okay.
Pardon?
We have a motion to approve the resignation. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, now we have approved the consent.
Motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, all right. Approve, you're gonna approve our case. We have an executive session we need to go into and I really love having Glenn read this.
Really.
But do we, do we need to take a break before we?
No, we're good.
Executive session.
I'm good if you're asking.
No, we're good.
I'm asking the group. I'm not pointing out one person. Because I have a hard time hearing you, it's why.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, if not, let's, let's proceed.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss due process proceedings related to the renewal of teacher contracts pursuant to the attorney-client privilege of exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, two. The open meeting to resume this location at seven, eight o'clock.
At eight o'clock?
PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, human resources director, Ochleger, the college attorney, vice president, Forda, vice president, Fory, should be included in the executive session.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
First, still moved to go into the executive session for the reasons stated by Mr. Trumps.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Wow.
Both, same sign. All right, we are now in executive session till eight o'clock. Thank you. We are now back in regular session and there was no action taken in our executive session. So with that, we have completed the agenda and the meeting will stand adjourned. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good week.